Join the meeting after the recording starts. I've never received that message before, so we'll need to give her a moment to rejoin us. You noticed it did must have dropped her. Would you like me to begin with that general welcome on a virtual meeting while we're waiting?
Sure. I feel like Mrs. Puck just joined by phone.
All right. It always fills that airspace. So, welcome to this virtual Board of Education meeting. Attending a virtual meeting may be a new experience for some. So, please allow me to take a moment to review some procedures that will allow everyone to participate. When speaking, please state your name, address, and topic before beginning your comments. Some meeting participants are joining by telephone and cannot see the face or name of the speaker as shown on the computer screen. The public participation at board meetings, as per Bylaw 0167.3, applies to this virtual meeting. Please mute your phone or computer microphone to prevent feedback and background noise during times when you're not speaking. There is a chat box in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The chat box may be used to pose a question. The name or telephone number of the person posting the chat comment will appear on the screen. The Board President will read the question aloud during the appropriate section of the meeting for guests calling in by the telephone. This meeting has an opportunity for public comment under item number nine on the agenda. If you would like to register to make comments during this meeting, please type your name, address, and topic in the chat box at this time. All Board of Education votes will be conducted through a roll call vote. The meeting is being recorded. The recording does include anything typed into the chat box.
Thank you, Dr. Opper. We will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you have a flag for us, Dr. Opper? There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I believe you're on via telephone. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right, if you would call the roll thing.
Mr. Scheller?
Here.
Mr. Seager?
Here.
Mr. Forbes?
Here.
Mr. Holman? Mrs. Tuckey here. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
I am here as well. Mr. Holman, I see you, but you were muted. Are you present?
He just texted me. He's getting no sound or camera, but he can see everyone. He must be on your computer.
Okay, so I would I would assume that, well, he can't hear us. And he's not exactly present.
Um. Mr. Holman? If you can hear me, try logging out of your computer and logging back in again. Sometimes that remedies the problem. And that's the extent of my technical expertise. Otherwise, we'll have to refer it onto Mr. Cobberobius. I'm going to try typing that. Oh, there he is.
All right, are you able to hear us now, Mr. Holman?
Take it off mute.
Some days are just like that with technology.
That they are. Are you able to hear us, Mr. Holman?
You could type your answers, Mr. Holman, into the chat box.
Dr. Opper, maybe if you want to have some text correspondence with Mr. Holman and see if we can get him squared away, and we'll just go ahead and move forward. Dr. Opper, can you verify publication of meeting?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Um. Presentations. Mr. McGregor, substantial completion in our project.
Good evening, everybody. Um, yes, that is the big topic for tonight is substantial completion for the bid package two of the School District of Manawa Project referendum scope of work. So really what substantial completion all entails is really just a contractual piece of paper that says we are complete and the district is taking ownership of um the areas of work. So, the district has been occupying those spaces since the beginning of school, as we're all aware. Um, but this really just is the piece of paper closing out the contract. Um, as I have told the Board as well as Dr. Opper numerous times, we're not going anywhere. We still have items that we're wrapping up. We still have items that we're completing. Um, there's probably a total of about a little over a hundred items left on the punch list. The vast majority of them are HVAC related, um, and they're continuing to pick away at them. Um, some of them range from existing pieces of equipment that are causing problems to uh some of the new equipments that are still being commissioned um throughout the overall building automation system. So along with that, I mentioned commissioning, that is going to be ongoing through the remainder of this cooling season and into the heating season. Um, and they're also getting all the test and balancing done on the the air and water throughout the building. Um, one item that we uh hit really hard the last two weeks, and yet this week is training on a lot of the components throughout the building, whether they be fire alarm, um, lighting. Uh, tomorrow we meet with main stage to go through the uh lighting components on the stage. Um, and we'll also be going through the audio on the stage as well. We're working through some um COVID-related issues with our audiovisual contractor, so uh that may get delayed or it may end up being virtual. I know we did a virtual training through the door access control system last week, and that was uh very positive. Um, and I think there was a lot of um new components learned about that system. So all in all, we're we're really coming together. Um, I'm I'm not getting as many calls from Dan and Melanie on a daily basis as they were the first couple of weeks of school. Um, but I think uh kudos to the entire staff uh there. As Dan mentioned before the meeting started, uh it's a pretty interesting way to start the school year, not only with um construction still lingering, but uh COVID and the virtual learning, your your teachers and admin staff are doing a phenomenal job, kind of holding it all together. Um, and we're trying to just stay out of their way as much as possible. Um, as far as a budget update, right now, um current dollar figure, uh we're looking right around about $600,000 mark for um contingency and allowances remaining. Uh, there is some still some final paperwork coming in and some change orders yet to be written. Um, but that's where we're currently sitting right now. And I know we had talked previous at a previous meeting that we're probably going to target that um November meeting to approve uh what projects going forward and um when they would be targeted to go forward with. Any questions referendum related?
Would you consider the one-year operational override referendum to be complete? All work complete on that site? Um. Are all bills paid on that project?
Uh, there are two, oh, there's some retainage that has yet to be paid. But and there is one bill for Northland Electric. We did the lighting in the new parking lot. Uh, that'll be coming through on the uh September draw, uh which will be coming up in another week or so.
And then as to the solar energy, that's still pending at this point. They have taken a look at our proposal, but they haven't made any final decisions at this point?
Yep, and it sounded like uh the last report we got from uh Henry, our solar um consultant, is everything looks positive, but they're they're not really pulling the trigger on anything right now, and everything kind of slowed down to a crawl with uh um COVID being involved.
The elementary area was, or uh, it turns into a green space. That was coming to an end, kind of sort of. I know we had talked about uh that drive, trying to get that part of like blacktopping that to be part of it. Did you ever come up with any answers on that one?
That would be uh, Dr. Opper, I don't know if you had any conversation with Tony, um, your legal counsel on that?
No, I did not. But I can.
Because right now I think there is uh about $23,000 remaining in the operational referendum, Bruce.
Okay. I just know we had mentioned it, so I'd just, you know, see if it can fly, see if we can't.
And Carmen, in the one-year operational override, when do we, when does access to that resource end?
Um, I don't know. I mean, close it out when we're ready to close it out. So I would hope that we get it all done this year. I don't think that we need to carry that forward um much farther, but it's it's when we determine that we are done.
Because I don't believe we'll have the ability to blacktop anymore this season. It's going to be cooling off too much to to be doing blacktop work. So we're talking about a year from now. In the one-year operational override, we will still have access to the 23,000 in the next budget cycle?
We, right, as long as we keep it open, we do, we collected the funds, it's just whenever we're ready to to close that referendum out, it's just simply filling out the the forms with DPI.
I kind of think that's the only thing we've had kind of hanging over that, I guess, like whether that was a possibility or whether it wasn't, so. Hopefully, get an answer sooner than later, I guess.
All right, I will call Tony tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions referendum related? I I don't want to hold up the group too long because I know you have a full agenda tonight. And if not, I, as always, I appreciate the time and I appreciate uh seeing everybody on a monthly basis and looking forward to um maybe, hopefully, October might be in person. We'll see.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holman, I just wanted to check in. Are you able to hear us now?
He, so I wrote the question, can you see and hear us now? The answer was yes. They can only hear on my phone.
Okay.
So are you able to
All right.
phone and participate, Mr. Holman? I believe Mr.
Try mute a phone. It's star six. Hopefully, it it gets remedied here. Um, Q12 Survey Strategies Administrative Team, that would be uh, looks like Ms. Brower and Mr. Wolfgram.
Yes, I can give a little update. When we left um the school at the end of last year, we had tentatively had a date set on for Thursday last week for the Trust Action Team to reconvene. Uh, the meeting came up very fast without having an opportunity to really onboard administrative discussion as to where we would like to go with that this year. So it really, at this point, is is open. And Ms. Brower and I are more than happy to to meet. We just would like to uh do some directives on where we'd like to go with this committee. Having a meeting with them. So I spoke with, and I was like your, I was like your tone, Danny.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we wanted to be, talk as an admin team on where we'd like to go with that, and certainly any wishes of the Board uh that we would like to move forward with.
So we'll be doing another um Q12 in October, and so usually what the team does then, the Trust Action Teams, look at comparative analysis one year to the next. Uh, where are we gaining, um, where do we need to focus energies, and then um have them set a goal. So last year, the group was working on
We were working towards recognition, and we did a lot of nice things in the building as far as we knew that that was an area that we felt we could make good ground on. Um, so there were things that, obviously, with the recognition ceremony is one piece of it. Another part is um, we started doing some collaborative uh wow's on Wednesday in both buildings, I believe, where we're uh recognizing the affirmation from administration as well as each other. Uh, because we feel as though that the culture is one that we need to be doing it not just from the top down, but from the bottom up and from side to side. So that way, everybody feels as though we're recognizing the work that we're doing, and I I think my own personal opinion is that we've made good strides in there.
So that's one of the elements of the What's Up Doc as well, and so that that was the focus last year because that was one of the lower scoring areas in the Q12. So we'll be looking specifically at that one to see um, did we make some improvements? Did those strategies have an impact? And and then taking it from there in in the team's analysis to see where they would like to go next, or if they want to continue working on that specific one of the 12, so. I think that's about all we've got there.
All right, thank you. Um, up next, we have our key performance indicators, Dr. Opper.
Thank you much. So back to sharing again. So wanted to remind you that we have four key performance indicator areas. And we've broken each one of those four areas down into very specific um areas of focus that we can measure. And then what we did this past year, um, and let me get the resizing here a little bit. Let's see if that'll do it. Okay, um. So one of the things we did was um take each month of the year and assign one of the key performance indicator areas and do a specific topic focus for you so that um you would be, in the course of any given school year, updated on how we're doing in the the way that we measure our success as a school district. So tonight we are going, oh, I should spell my own name right. We can fix that while you're watching. Um, tonight we'll be looking at the school safety plan, which has been updated to include um ALICE protocols throughout the whole handbook. Uh, so that's a change in our operational efficiencies since last school year. Next month, we'll be taking a look at learning, and we'll also be looking at engagement and satisfaction. So as we scan the school year, you can see that by the end of the any given school year, you will have taken a look at least once, and sometimes more than once at the key performance indicators. We did this because in addition to um state report card and other outside measurements of our success, we wanted to be able to um measure our own effectiveness using things that we value internally as an organization in terms of our key functions. So any questions on that? That's all I have in that section.
Thank you, Dr. Opper. All right, announcements, contributions to the district. We received the following donations. Sacred Heart Parish, $100 donation for student earbuds with microphones. April Gunderson and Thrivant Financial donated 100 home-made masks for elementary, middle, and high school students. The Class of 1980 donated $112 for the Urgent Needs Fund. Solaris donated $1,000 from Partners in Education. Hawk Trailer President Brian Kim, an in-kind donation of time and use of a forklift for moving technology education equipment. Ellen Connor donation of $100 to Manawa FFA to provide membership scholarships. And the Manawa Lions Club donation of $212 in school supplies from Stuff the Box event. So thank you to all of those groups and individuals for their generous donations to the district. Consent agenda. Would any member, like any item removed from the consent agenda to be dealt with separately? We will then vote by general consent. And hearing notice, consent agenda, here. Um, public comments. I do not see anything in the chat box.
No, nor do I.
Presume that I will presume that we have no public comments. Correspondence, there was none this month. Board recognition, there was none this month. District administrators report, Dr. Opper.
And I see we have Colin Mojer on with us. Um, so Colin, if you would take a moment to give us an update on your perspective on the start of the school year.
Uh, I think it's going better than I thought it would. And kids are actually like wearing their masks and stuff, and a lot of them are trying to like follow those kind of rules, but I know a lot of kids are a little upset about the A B days because they don't really like that, and that's pretty much all I've heard from other kids.
So um, one of the big events always in the fall is homecoming. So um, tell us a little bit about um homecoming and again, what are you hearing from the student body on getting ready for homecoming this year?
Yeah, so we decided to move homecoming to the week of October 3rd, I think, for our game against Stratford. Because uh it was supposed to be this week, but with school starting and everything being so hectic, uh, we decided to postpone it a couple of weeks so we could get more things planned and get more kids like involved instead of just worrying about like all the new stuff and all the rules they have to follow.
So are there any other issues that you're hearing from students that you think would be important to bring before the Board?
Um, I don't think so.
And the Board, this is your chance to to relay any messages back to the student body. Alan's your liaison this month.
I guess I would just like to say thank you to the student body, um, you know, for being as cooperative as everyone has been this year. This is certainly not the way that any of us envision school to be. Um, and I know that it's really difficult on students, and it's certainly difficult on our teaching staff as well. So when we have um I hate to use the word cooperation, but I guess when we have understanding uh from our student body, it it does make things flow a little smoother for our teaching staff as well. So I appreciate that. Um, and I appreciate the fact that we have a student council representative coming every single month that is able to be our eyes and ears for the students. So thank you, Colin.
No problem.
And I did, I did forget to ask too, Colin, about um reactions to the building when you came in. Did, did you hear or see any reactions to any of the new spaces that you have available this year?
Yeah, I know a lot of kids are excited about the new weight room and everything and all that. That's pretty nice to have, and a lot of people are kind of confused on why uh they moved more grades up to this building.
So they're not really understanding middle school, sixth through eighth grade?
Correct.
That'd be a great conversation um that Mr. Wolfgram could lead, or um, the middle school team, in fact, spent a lot of time developing their social emotional learning goals. And um, the importance of having a middle school, so. Um, I don't know if you want to chime in, Mr. Wolfgram?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I mean, the short answer, Colin, is that um it's educationally appropriate because oftentimes the curric, the curriculum in Wisconsin is banded sixth through eighth grade. So it lines for, there's words vertical and horizontal alignment of the curriculum. So that way, um, kids are getting opportunities to make those transitions in those years appropriately. The second is social emotional learning. There's opportunities for those kids to rehearse and practice uh the types of challenges that they're facing with. What even what you faced as a sixth grader when you were back then, if you can remember, it's changed since then. They've, they are now being forced into that realm of adulthood even sooner than what you were. So it's a, it's an opportunity for them to be able to be in kind of a cloistered environment where they can end up practicing a lot of those routines and social emotional learning skills. Third is opportunities for advancement, to be able to move through the curriculum faster and maybe even access some of the high school curriculum um in a in a quicker manner. Um, and it's opportunities for um additional electives that kids, hopefully, we can continue to build into the curriculum that they wouldn't have had um at the elementary school.
Well, thank you again, Colin. I look forward to continuing um student council morning meetings once a month, um, as we're able to do so either virtually or in person. Um, so those were always um a highlight of my month to be able to participate in those meetings.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to just share the screen while I'm transitioning here. So one of the things I wanted to share with you is that um Boardman and Clark had put together a legal update on the Families First Corona Response Coronavirus Response Act. So there are um some additional pieces of information. The further we get into it, and as more people begin to use these leave opportunities, a few questions have come up. So this new documentation is available to um address questions about whether intermittently, you know, can you be gone on Mondays um for a period of time and work the rest of the week? What would happen if you weren't, if you were in a laid off situation? Um, that doesn't apply to anyone in our district at this point, um, but it has come up in other districts. Documentation and giving notice for leave, and then um leave for people who are part of the healthcare provider system. So this is available if anyone should be clarification and Carmen continues to be our local expert helping to guide our staff through the leave process should it become necessary. Then back on September 17th, the federal court did find Wisconsin School District denied a free and appropriate public education. And one of the things that they really reinforced, again, this was a Boardman and Clark case, the importance of implementing I E Ps with fidelity and fully addressing a student's lack of progress. So one of the things we're responsible for doing is monitoring at least annually how a student is doing. And they also get updates at about the same time a report card would naturally come out. So there's supposed to be some additional information. If you have a student who's not thriving in their learning environment, adaptations are supposed to be made, a meeting is supposed to be held and appropriate adjustments made. And in this case, it was even if a parent refuses to participate in that process, but the district is still legally responsible for ensuring that students are making academic progress. So that was just in an important ruling because we do really need to make sure we're following special education law to the letter. Danny is our special ed director. Would there be anything else you'd add to that?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't add anything to it. I would, other than saying that there was another court case, I believe two years ago called Andrew F., which is the one that kind of started, was like the big one to start the discussion about students making progress in their special education, in their I E Ps and being able to show that and then make changes if they are not. So that this one is kind of is after the Andrew F. It is, it doesn't change anything for special ed. We are still doing everything that we had done before. We, the, the thing, the part about the parents, if the parents aren't involved in the meeting, that has been what we have to do. What we do is have three attempts. We have to make three attempts to involve a parent in an I E P meeting. If they do not reply, then we go ahead and have the meeting. So that is not anything that's any different. It's just a piece of this. Thank you guys. Know if you have any questions for me?
And the final one in this section on legislative updates also talks about the third Friday count. There's a lot of anticipation on the third Friday count, which is September 18th. And so we, we have some preliminary data. But you'll notice that some of those numbers seem to be a little bit off. So we still have to go through the process of confirming the accuracy of the third Friday count before we formally submit that report. But that's important because our funding is linked to the enrollment as it appears on the third Friday in September. So it is one of the reasons why it gets so much attention. And the other big date is the second Friday in January to a slightly lesser degree. So people are anticipating, there was a lot of movement this year. If people didn't like what their homeschool district was doing, it caused people to do a lot of shifting. And in many instances, that was in the larger cities shifting to online virtual schools. So enrollments in some of those schools has really gone up. And in fact, I've heard rumor that some of the schools had to cut off their enrollments, which I don't recall a time where that was ever an issue before. But that definitely affects the local school districts then if people are choosing online charter schools as an alternative. So I don't know as a transition, if you have any questions about enrollment numbers. Were able to compare where we ended last school year compared with where we are at in terms of enrollments. You'll see some of our classes are significantly smaller this fall than they were last year where we ended the year. Okay, if there are no questions on the enrollment report, I did want to speak briefly to the reopening plan and just affirming and in making sure it's very clear to everyone that we are expecting on September 28th that the governor's face covering order will be expiring. We haven't heard any news about an extension of that. That did supersede the face covering portion of your board school reopening plan that had been previously approved. So when the governor's order expires, as we are anticipating it to do so, the board approved plan with situational masking would go back into effect again. So just wanted to affirm that and make sure if there were any questions about it, we, we spoke of that. As curriculum director, we haven't had any meetings over the past month, but there is some curriculum work that is going to be starting. We are working with CISA six and their math experts on the math adoption. So here on Wednesdays on October 21st, they're going to be presenting some best practice and materials that they find based on criteria provide for highly effective math instruction. And then they'll do a follow-up session on November 18th. And all of this will be leading to a recommendation in the next budget cycle to adopt updated math materials. For sure, K eight and potentially at the secondary level as well. We'll analyze that as time comes along. And then the English language arts curriculum is up for adoption. So that's the big area. And again, buildings will be working on that on Wednesdays during their early release time. So we'll be alternating among several different key facets of instruction. The other thing that I'm working on is interviewing a couple of firms that provide instructional technology support to staff as well as training or professional development for parents, how to get used to working in a virtual world and providing little 30-minute mini sessions for parents. So I'm looking at a second firm tomorrow, but I'm very impressed with the people I met with today. And we'll probably be looking at using some of our CARES funds and or Title II to provide supports for both teachers and parents, which has been a commonly requested area of support this fall. And I wanted to remind you that this year our online regional meeting is on October 22nd. And we do have two board members that are going to be recognized this year for their level accomplishments. Bruce and Joanne are both being recognized this year. I hope you got letters in the mail letting you know that you're being recognized, so. Might want to join online for that event. And then for the state convention, I know it's a little early to be thinking about attending the state convention in Milwaukee in January. But we did book the rooms in case we are able to attend in person. Otherwise, many of those conventions have been going to virtual. So if you're interested in participating, whether virtually or in person, do let me know and we will be sure to get a reservation for you. And I think that brings me to the end of my report unless you have any questions.
All right, thank you, Dr. Roper. School operations report. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Brower or Mr. Wolfgram in regards to the reports? Any comment from either of you?
I would like to comment, I'd like to thank Dr. Roper and Board President Johnson as we've worked through this homecoming transition and the support and ideas that have come forward. This was, as I talked to student council advisor Mary Eck, the way she described a lot of our kiddos for the first week was a little bit of shell shock is that it was exciting. There was an enormous activity that happened in the building. And normally our homecoming activities would be about the fourth week of September. So we would have normally been in school four weeks. And with some of these kids at the high school level for the A B day, they had been there all of four days. So there was much to be acclimating that just the physical proximity in the building. And we were trying to get kids engaged to be able to get things going with homecoming. As we know, we also had a very late start to the athletic season. I think it was very wise on the part of the student council and Mary Eck to consider moving this game in the festivities two weeks on down. I wanted to be able to thank Coach Johnson and the football team and their coaching staff for their support to be able to say, Mr. Wolfgram, whenever you put the game, we're going to show up. We'll bring both barrels loaded and we're going to get excited and fired up. I'm excited to be able to work with my staff to be able to reimagine and re-envision some of the activities that the student council is going to be surveying the student body with. I think this is a, a real opportunity for us to reflect on what is homecoming really about? What are the traditions? And how can we engage not only our student body, but our community and our alumni as well, especially in the midst of a pandemic? So it's a little bit of a hit the reset button, but I think it's all timely and I think there was a lot of hard decisions and, and, and good thought put into this. So I wanted to thank all of those stakeholders for the support and know that Ms. Eck is going to be looking forward to programming some things and our staff is looking forward to helping support her. So those are some, some thoughts coming from the principal's desk.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say at the elementary school that I think things went as smoothly as they probably could have in the first two weeks of school. Kids have been amazing with wearing masks. I think they've shocked everyone, teachers, parents, everyone included. There has never been, I know none of us really want to wear them, but the kids aren't really having an issue with doing that. And the teachers are doing a very good job of finding ways that they can do activities where they don't have to, getting outside a little bit more, using our outside and giving them breaks from wearing their masks. I can honestly say that I think some of the things that we've instituted because of the pandemic may stay around. Because some of our kids who gave, who struggled the most in the past are flourishing right now. Because some of the things that we added in because we thought they were better for kids, I don't, it's still up in the air and whether or not it was, they were really better. So things I've been going really well. Pictures were awesome on Friday. I helped all the teachers during pictures and I had such a good time. The morning went so fast, but I got to see every single student in our school, which is really, was really fun. They, most of them think I'm very silly, so, but it went very smooth.
Thank you. All right, business related reports. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. O'Brien? Mrs. O'Brien, do you have comments?
Yes, I wanted to talk to you about our food service and a fun, interesting, wonderful program that we are able to offer our families. On the August 31st, so it came really late and very unexpectedly. The district was notified by DPI that they were going to extend the seamless summer option through December 31st of 2020 or until available funds run, run out. This is the same program that we operated under last spring when we delivered meals to families. And it allows the district to serve meals outside of the cafeteria and free of charge for all of our families. It also though, the caveat is that it requires that meals are available for all students, 18 years old and younger living within the district boundaries. So that adds a little extra step for us to be able to try to, to figure out how to get, you know, families meals. So Mrs. Zies and I had already begun considering how to offer food to high school students on the days that they were learning from home and how to do that. But we wanted to set up a system that could take both orders from the community and from our high school students. So we went through many iterations of a Google order form and we applied for the DPI waiver. And we actually got the system up and running on September 14th. So starting on the 14th, all of our, all children have been able to have both a free breakfast and lunch each day regardless of family income. Community members can pick up hot lunches and a hot lunch and a breakfast for children between 10:30 and 11:00 in the morning. So we just don't have the staffing right now to be able to extend that. So, so that's an issue, but but it's still a good thing for our community. And then students are able to pick up a grab and go meal on the days that they're physically in school for the days that they're learning from home. And again, all free, so they can, they can get all of that free of charge. The government 100% reimburses the school district. So then we also were able to, we, we offered bag lunches for our 4K students, for our morning 4K students. So they can, they can grab a lunch bag and take it home with them on the bus. And so far we have about six kids that are, that are doing that daily. Let's see here. Oh, last year we maybe served 30 breakfasts a day at the elementary school. So on any given day about 30 breakfasts. Last Friday, we served 130 breakfasts to our students. So that's a wonderful way that our kids can start the day with, with full bellies and it doesn't cost them a dime. And then I also, I snuck a little peek at the order form for this week. And as of this, this evening, I see that we have orders for about 40 hot lunch meals and a breakfast from the community. So it's about anywhere from seven to nine meals per day that are going out, but, but still we're, we're hoping that the program will, will build. And we have about four students taking advantage of the bag lunches. So we're hoping to grow that program as well. Hopefully as more people hear about it, we'll increase our program just like we did this past spring. We started off kind of small and it blossomed. So we're, we're hoping to continue that. So that is the, the seamless summer option report that I have for you.
So if you do have any friends, neighbors, relatives with children not yet in school that would benefit from these free meals, be sure to let them know. They can reach out to Mrs. O'Brien or either the principals and we can get them set up with, with those, those meals. We want to make sure we're reaching as many people in the community as possible.
All right, thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. All right, director reports. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cover Rubius about his report? Mr. Cover Rubius, did you have any comments?
I'll make one quick comment. I did mention this in my, my board report. We've had some significant issues with internet problems the last couple of weeks. We are working on them and we've brought in CISA and one of our vendors for some of our hardware to, to work on those issues. I'm optimistic that it will be stable going forward, but we do have a little more work to do to make it permanently stable. going forward, but we do have a little more work to do to make it permanently stable. So if you guys have heard about some internet issues, it is true. There've been some problems last couple of weeks, but we are working on them.
Thank you. Does any board member have any comments to share publicly? Committee reports. Does anyone have any questions for any committee chair regarding their reports? There was no unfinished business. New business. Item A, consider approval of the 2020-21 food service meal price change.
Bruce Schaller. I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the 2020-2021 food service meal price change as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaller. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Pecky, I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Pecky. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman? Are you able to unmute, Mr. Holman? I believe Mr. Holman is still having some technical difficulties there. Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Schaller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
It is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries. Absent Mr. Holman. Item B, consider approval of resolution waiver of certain school board or district requirements.
And Mr. Holman, if you want to vote, could you type your answer in the chat box in the upper right-hand corner of your screen?
Russ Johnson, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve resolution SY2021 number one waiver of certain school board or school district requirements pursuant to Wisconsin State 118.381 and 1M as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Pecky, I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Pecky. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
He's giving a thumbs up. Does that count? A visual thumbs up?
I can't see that. I'm glad that you actually can, because I just have a picture of Mr. Holman on my screen. So I will take that as an affirmative from Mr. Holman. Mr. Forbes?
Trying every way possible to communicate.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Schaller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries. Item C, consider approval of resolution 2021 number two.
Bruce Schaller. I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve resolution in school year 2021 number two. Whereas section 119.25B Wisconsin statutes provided to school board of Manawa school district may authorize the use of an independent hearing officer to determine pupil expulsions from school. Such authorization is effective only during the school year in which it is adopted.
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Stan Forbes, second.
Second by Mr. Forbes. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman?
Thumbs up again.
Yes, he does.
Okay, he's frozen on my screen. It's crazy. Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item D, consider approval of school district safety plan.
Stan Forbes?
Ross John. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the district safety plan as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
Luke Seeger, I second.
Second by Mr. Seeger. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman? I got it this time. Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item E, consider approval of administrative job description.
Mrs. Pecky, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve the district administrator, curriculum director, business manager, and district reading specialist job descriptions as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Pecky. Do I have a second?
Russ Johnson, I second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman? That would be an aye. Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Item F, consider people for staff, Manawa Police Department officers, and Manawa Rural Fire Department and first responders to be in use of the fitness center.
Stan Forbes, I move that the Manawa Board of Education approve fitness center used to begin on Monday, November 2nd, 2020. For staff, Manawa Police Department officer, and Manawa Rural Fire Department firefighters and first responders with stipulations as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forbes. Do I have a second?
Luke Seeger, I second.
Second by Mr. Seeger. Any discussion?
Yeah, could we explain exactly why they're being allowed to and not to rest in a citizenry?
Baby steps was, it was the suggestion to not begin with the general public until January or potentially the start of second semester. To allow the staff and students an opportunity to get oriented to their new equipment, the space, the procedures. You know, again, normally, they would have been using that space at the start of the sports season, but the start of the sports season was also delayed this year. So with our construction, they've only had a few days to really experience that equipment, but then it was suggested to us to consider the possibility of maybe dipping our toe into the pool by allowing some of our local individuals who would like to do some physical training as part of their work-related responsibilities to the community. And just dabble in it and see how it works out with just a very small number of people who already do, in the event of an emergency, have access to our building. Would also give us a chance then to find out where we might have some challenges. And we could address that before we open up to the full public. Hopefully in January, if everything continues to go well. Last I heard, in our county, we were doing quite well with regard to the number of active COVID cases. So hopefully that trend will continue and that will just mean opening up more and more opportunities for both students, staff, and our community.
Are there, are there hours that are going to be available for these people? And secondly, is there a charge or how is that going to be handled?
Excellent question, and those are decisions you can make. The hours would be limited to times when there are no students using the facility. Again, we don't want to have any unnecessary exposures. So we would be working with the coaches to find out when they are using the facilities and then set the hours around that. So thus, the statement about limited hours. And the, the initial suggestion was to waive the fee for these public servants, but that would be your decision. If you would like there to be a fee or to waive the fee because of the public service provided by these individuals.
It sounds like they're kind of helping us out in a way because you're using a guinea pig, so to speak. To try things out and see if how they like it and what can be improved, what can be, you know, so you're actually going to get a benefit that way.
And with our staff, it's certainly part of having a positive wellness program for the staff to be able to allow them to work out, stay healthy, which we definitely want to do during this pandemic.
And I've gotten into a lot with our cross-country group and I know they all enjoyed the experience in there, so I think it's pretty nice in there.
Do they have any trouble with them keeping their masks on at all?
I was down there on a tour. The police department tour, all three of them, took place on the afternoon of a school day and the kids were doing just great. They were physically distanced. They all seemed to be having a great time. We did move the equipment further apart, which is beneficial too, which means we can use all the different pieces of equipment. And they're all facing in one direction, which is also highly recommended. And the kids had their masks on, so that happened to be one of Mr. Murphy's classes and I thought he was doing a great job.
Our group across country, they've been listening pretty well. You got to remind them, remind them frequently, but they do a pretty good job of keeping their masks on.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote by roll. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman? That would be an affirmative. Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecky?
Aye.
Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye for Mrs. Johnson as well. Motion carries by roll call vote. Next meeting dates, September 28th, we have finance committee at 6 o'clock. October 7th is staff and recognition and employee appreciation, 2:30 at the middle school, high school commons. I would like to have a discussion with board members following this meeting, so we can kind of plan that a little bit, please. 7th is also buildings and grounds at 5:30. 14th is policy and human resources at 5. October 19th is a regular board meeting, 7:00 P.M. And October 26th is the annual district meeting. And there is a need to set the October curriculum committee meeting as well.
Would someone from curriculum want to toss out a preferred date and time?
I honestly didn't hear everything. You cut out really bad, Joanne, so.
Oh, I apologize. We're getting a date and time for more. A date and time for a curriculum meeting and we do need to have some conversation about our staff recognition and employee appreciation as well.
Okay.
Like October 7th or 14th, what day of the week is that?
The 7th is a Wednesday. As is the 14th. Right now, there are no meetings on October 5th or 6th. Buildings and grounds took the prime time on Wednesday, the 7th.
How late can, I mean, how late do you guys want to go on for a curriculum meeting? What's the latest we can do?
A lot of times, 6 is about all the later, but I mean, you, me, and Russ, we can are you trying to say what time you get off to work or something?
Well, well, with
You talking to Russ Johnson or Russ Holman here? I can't.
Russ Holman.
Okay.
Luke, no, it was me. It was Luke that was speaking.
Yeah. What time does like football practice get done, that kind of thing?
Well, I don't have to. I mean, even if we can do like 6:30 or something, that's a little better because we're done at 7:00, so it's kind of hard to if it wasn't virtual, it wouldn't be as big of a deal, you know what I mean? I got to rush home and get on. So, and that practice doesn't start till 5:30, so that makes it a little difficult, but we practice every day except for Friday, so.
You're always welcome to stop over at the boardroom. That's where Bruce is right now.
Yeah, that's probably what I'll have to do because then it saves me 15, 20 minutes. So.
There's a, the desks are all spread apart and there's plenty of room in here.
And there may come a point very soon where we'll resume the, the in-person meetings. I, I know there are many of you that would like to do that, so. Now, now that the room is back to be in your boardroom and it's not a high school office anymore. It's a lot of open space in there, though.
Yeah, so it's up to you guys. I mean, if we can push towards 6:30, that would be better. I mean, but I guess it doesn't matter. As long as we do it maybe earlier in the weeks, so we're not, because we'll have games every Saturday, you know, for, for the little kids.
Did you want to aim for October 6th or October 12th?
Um. I guess that's completely up to you. I don't really care of the day.
Should we try for the 6th then?
Sure.
That'd be fine. I think we've got a Monday cross-country meet. If anybody had the schedule in front of them, sorry, I don't, but if I knew that, I'd know for sure.
I can switch.
Look that up for me.
I can switch screens.
There's no volleyball game on.
I think there's volleyball game on Monday or is that that week? I don't remember.
It doesn't matter. Not that big of a deal.
Hoping over to the athletics calendar and I'll be there shortly. Let's see here. So on October 6th, it is homecoming week and so there's a middle school football game, a JV2 volleyball match, a JV volleyball match, and a varsity volleyball match on the 6th. The varsity volleyball starts at 7:00. Uh, the varsity volleyball starts at seven thirty P M. Um, I would certainly think curriculum historically has been a shorter meeting, so, um, while we put aside ninety minutes, I'd be surprised if we fill forty-five.
Works for me then.
Okay. Super.
Right. Well, there was no cross-country that night. It worked for me too also.
Okay, um, then staff and employee appreciation, um, typically in the past, and, and this is new for you, Luke, um, the board has, uh, come together and, and we provide, um, snacks and, and, uh, for our staff, um, and Dr. Upper has circulated an email around and I'm not sure what you have gotten for responses. Um, my preference is that I throw money at something this year. Um, I really do not have time to do anything more than, than to contribute financially if, if that works.
I would agree with that too. It's like I'm very busy as well.
How's that gonna kind of work anyway? Could we, is it gonna be in person? Is it gonna be virtual or how is, how we, what are we talking about?
Um, we believe that the stage will be available, um, in the commons. Um, so if we have a presentation, we'll have the screen down. Um, traditionally, Mrs. Wright has, has done kind of a little PowerPoint highlights. Um, it'll just be chairs that are spaced six feet apart, so, um, it's best if the food is prepackaged items that people can grab it, take it to their spot, and, and then they can snack and visit with the people around them.
I don't know if everybody wants to kind of mull it over and, and, um, you know, maybe we, we circulate ideas by email, but October seventh is coming up quite quickly. Um, and we certainly don't want to find ourselves scrambling to try to put something together. Um, did you read the pricing, Dr. Upper, on the cookies that you were looking into yet?
Um, I was talking with Judy Trel from the Busy Bean, the bakers that they use, and they did the, the cookies for the, um, groundbreaking ceremony. And I don't have the pricing yet. Um, the Busy Bean is, is currently closed due to COVID, so, um, I'll check in again with Judy tomorrow. I think she had her hands full today. But we were thinking, um, some savory type of snack and potentially something that was gluten-free. We have a number of staff members that, um, can't enjoy a treat that unless it's gluten-free. So, we, we had tossed around even something simple like, um, a Chex Mix or, um, dried, uh, or, um, roasted nuts type of thing. Wouldn't have to be a super expensive thing, but something that could be bagged and easy to pick up, easy to snack on, doesn't create a lot of mess. Because people aren't going to have tables, so you don't want something that requires a plate and a fork and that just gets a little complicated.
Great. So, maybe we'll, uh, do some, some creative thinking if you would and, um, we'll maybe follow up with an email later this week and, and, uh, get some planning going here so that we don't miss that.
This was like a two thirty in the afternoon, like, when? Joanne, this was like two thirty in the afternoon, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, of the group, how many of us can even make that? Another breakfast when people took off.
I, I will be there.
Right. Yeah, I have a plan on being, being there, yeah.
I mean, I, I can, uh, how long do you think this will last?
Hour?
It's not. Hour or so. Yeah, I, I can probably adjust some stuff and be there too.
I was planning on being there.
Great. Well, that's great.
Anything else on that topic for now? Right, then I would be looking for more information.
Bruce Schaller, motion adjourned to meeting?
I have a motion by Mr. Scheller. Do I have a second?
Mrs. Pecky, I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Pecky. Any discussion? All right, and again, we'll do this by roll very quickly. Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Mr. Holman? It's out of my field of vision. Mr. Forbes?
Aye.
Mr. Holman said, yeah.
Perfect. Mr. Scheller?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And it is an aye from Mrs. Johnson as well, and motion carries at eight sixteen P M. And a happy birthday to Mr. Wood Graham, whose birthday it happens to be today. Happy birthday.
Thank you much.
Is that why there is cake?
Y'all gonna sing for him?